So. I'm the Toshus Project here with the meeting planning board. And come February thirteenth, twenty twenty five, planning board meeting to order. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. All materials for this meeting are available on the town's website of needhamma.gov. I'll call the row for the record when I call your name, please say you're present. Paul Alcott.
Present.
Are you calling? Adam Block.
Yes.
And Justin McCollum.
Present.
And we don't have our tags here, so please, if you need to remember our names, we can.
Just ask.
Just ask, yeah. Um, so with that, we have, the agenda today is the public hearing for the article one and article two at the amendment of zoning bylaw for the multifamily overlay district place plan. Um, for the zoning and the map change.
I'm the chair.
Yes.
I'm going to be the way of reading what the person here.
Second.
Second.
So motion by Adams, second by Paul, um, all of them are allowed.
Aye.
And so I think I have to write a little bit of a motion to open the hearing, right? First.
No, just open it.
No, we.
Also, check it out. Do you check out, so if you'd like this on the second.
But we also have a need a motion to wrap the meeting of the.
That was his motion.
I thought they were too separate.
No. There was only one notice.
Okay, I thought you had to open the hearing and then.
You did open the hearing. You could have.
Start a track.
Okay. Anyway, um, so just regarding process.
That's what we just.
That's very interesting. If we don't hear our names, we don't know. I thought we had opened the hearing, I did the same thing. Um, so just regarding the process, we're not going to do a presentation. Um, we're gonna open it up for public comment and then any final planning board member comments and questions. Uh, we'll move to close the hearing and then the decision will be issued at the next planning board meeting. Um, so with that, what I'd like to do is, uh, go through the presentation so that we can open up a public hearing. Um, so. I think. Are you sharing, Alex? Okay. And this is the same presentation, um, that we did at town meeting. So just for everyone to know that it is the, the same presentation, it's the base plan. We want to go through it again in case there are any questions and we want to hear from the public. So as soon as we can share, I can start. So I could start with just a big overview while Alex puts it up. It's, um, the MBTA Communities Act overview. Um, requiring one hundred and seventy-seven designated MBTA communities to have a zone and that provides at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. Danger restrictions and should be suitable for families with children. Must have a minimum gross density of fifteen dwellings, units per acre. A portion of the district must be located within a half a mile from the commuter rail station. And then the commuter rail communities, including Needham, other deadline, the comply with July fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we submitted, um, this plan to the state and it, and the state, um, came back lightly. The state came back approving it, um.
Yes, they approved the action plan that you submitted, so that we are compliant, so we have to adopt the zoning by the effective date of July fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Right.
And I heard you.
Alright, my bad. So yes, we submitted an action plan to the state and they got back to us and they let us know that that action plan has been approved by them, which means that Needham is now compliant, um, and under the obligation, of course, to adopt compliant MBTA zoning by the deadline of July fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
So we had to resubmit it, we couldn't just, um, assume that it was submitted before because they also changed the deadline to July fourteenth from December. Um, so again, Needham's requirement, specific requirements are fifty acres, um, one thousand seven hundred eighty-four units, fifteen, um, dwelling units per acre and ninety percent of, uh, to be located in the station area. Um, so the next slide. Here's an article overview, the base compliance plan. It's a scenario that adheres very closely to the zoning boundaries and dimensional standards of Needham's current bylaw. It's intended to meet the minimum compliance requirements of the MBTA Communities Act. Um, Article one creates a multifamily overlay district following the recommended district boundaries and dimensional standards in the base compliance plan. In Article two, the map change for the base compliance plan to accompany Article one. So currently, um, the base compliance plan has a hundred point three acres, uh, one thousand eight hundred and seventy unit capacity. The density is eighteen point six units per acre and the percent in the transit area is ninety-three percent. So when you go to the next. Go through the entire presentation and then take all the questions, open it up for public comment. Um, the base compliance scenario here shown, it follows the Highland Avenue, Chestnut Street corridor from Webster Street to Needham Junction. And it incorporates existing multifamily housing developments among that corridor that includes Hamilton Highlands, Rosemary Ridge, Rosemary Lake, the Highlands. It utilizes existing business and industrial districts and it incorporates multifamily housing at Charles Court condos. So the next one is the current zoning parameters. This is what the current zoning is. Um, mostly, uh, minimum lot size of twenty thousand apartment and ten thousand in the rest. The Hyden stories, three stories and apartment A one and business, four stories and Avery Square Business Silverway. Chestnut Street Business, two and a half stories, Hillside, two and a half, and industrial, three. Um, the floor area ratio is the reason why business and industrial don't have them is because they currently aren't by right. Um, and then the maximum dwelling unit per acre is eighteen with parking per unit is one point five. So when you go to the basic compliance plan, um, the, now the business and the industrial are included. The lot, the lot sizes remain the same, um, the heights now are all three stories as of right. Uh. The floor area ratio now changes because it's some of that areas did not have housing before. Um, and then a maximum lot coverage, um, is the same. And then the maximum dwelling units per acre, the Avery Square Business is forty-four where it used to be eighteen and that's based on, um, uh, Avery Square, uh, the Hundred West Street property. Uh, parking went down to one point zero. So the next one is a key comparison between base and existing zoning. So there's two things, there's dimension, dimensional standards and land use standards. The main things are, the height has increased from two after three stories in Chestnut Street Business and Hillside Avenue Business Subdistricts. And the minimum number required parking spaces is reduced from one and a half to one spaces in all subdistricts. Regarding land use, multifamily development is converted from special permit to as of right in Avery Square, Chestnut Street and Hillside Avenue Business Subdistricts. Multifamily development is introduced as permitted as of right use in business and industrial subdistricts, which were not allowed before, I mean, which were by special permit. Uh, Avery Square Business is subdistrict to be detailed in a subsequent slide. And there are current law overlay districts at Chestnut Street, Moverie Square. And those overlays currently already allow higher density multifamily housing than the base plan. So it's pretty similar to what we currently have. Not exact, but almost. Um, so the next side is the units allowed under existing and proposed zoning. And so the existing units that we have are seven hundred and seventy-five. The existing zoning unit capacity is a thousand nineteen. Special permit increases to one thousand six hundred and thirty-six. So the base compliance plan, unit capacity is one thousand eight hundred and seventy. The likely build, because the seven seventy-five are already built and, and you know, there's still, there's already, um, builders in most of those lots is about four hundred and eleven. So in general, and that's within a tenure plan, right, or so. Uh, in general, the, the two things that were, were to increase again is in the Chestnut Street, um, and in the, um, Avery Square. I'm sorry, in the industrial and the Chestnut Street, uh, and business, because business currently doesn't have it. Um, so then the next is the slide of locating the areas. The first one is apartment A one subdistrict. This area compares some of these. And so A is the Avery School Hamilton Highlands area. B is the Highlands, um, Saint Job's area. C is the Rosemary Ridge, Rosemary Lake area. And then D is the Charles Court condos. And as you can see here, the existing zoning and the base compliance is, is pretty similar. Biggest difference is the parking per unit, um, when it got reduced. The next slide is the scenario comparison for the business subdistricts. And so that basically, if you look at the base compliance. It's, it's very similar, um, except under the existing zoning, multifamily housing is not allowing this district. So we're making, um, it will not be allowed. Um, the next one is a scenario comparison of Avery Square Subdistrict. If you look at the existing overlay zoning, you have a four-story height, the, the minimum lot size is the same. You have four stories and we reduce it to three. The floor area ratio went from one point one to one point three. And then the maximum dwelling units per acre went from eighteen to forty-four. And parking per unit is one point five to one. So under the base plan, this only would allow four stories. Um, an FAR of one point seven and a density greater than forty-four dwelling units per acre by special permit. It would only apply to the Hundred West Street parcel. And that's under a special permit, not as of right. The next one is the base compliance plan, what it includes for Avery Square Business District. Multifamily housing development is as of right of three stories, an FAR of one point three and a limit of forty-four maximum dwelling units per acre. The MBTA community compliance model calculates this at a hundred and eighty-nine units. Multifamily housing development by special permit of one point seven, a density greater than forty-four units per acre and four stories. So, uh, stringent development standards for parking garages, facades and curb cuts. So the maximum FAR permitted as of right was increased from one point one to one point three with, with a special permit to increase the maximum FAR to one point seven. Parking garages, structured parking or deck rooftop parking screened from Highland Avenue, West Street are not counted towards the FAR. Maximum area for floors increased from thirty-five percent of roof area to a hundred percent. Um, a maximum number of dwelling units per acre, a standard of forty-four is introduced for the as of right condition. And a density greater than forty-four units per acre is permitted, but only by special permit. Um, the next slide shows the Chestnut Street Subdistricts. So there's the Garden Street, which is A, um, between Bay Street and Great Plain Avenue. And B is the Chestnut Street from south of Great Plain Avenue to Junction Street. Um, the zoning, minimum lot size is the same. The height is increased from two and a half to three stories. Everything else is the same, except for the. Goes from one point five to one. The next one is the Hillside Avenue Business Subdistrict. So this one is, um, the minimum lot size would be the same. The height would go up from two point, two and a half to three stories. Floor area, floor area ratio stays the same. Um, the maximum dwelling units per acre, um, is, is eighteen and, um, the parking was eighteen in the existing zoning. The parking per unit is from one point five to one. The next one is the industrial subdistricts, which includes Hillside Avenue, the West Street to Rosemary Street, Crescent Road, which is B. Um, and C is, is Denmark Lane off Maple Street to Great Plain Avenue. In this case, the minimum lot size, the height are all the same. We created a floor area ratio of point five. Maximum lot coverage, um, is now MA, it used to be sixty percent because now we have an FAR. And then the parking also went down. So under existing zoning, housing is not allowed in this district. So one of the big questions that we had was site plan review. And we talked, um, significantly with, uh, town council about this. So we want to make sure that we understand what is part of the review and what isn't. Um, so for site plan review, applications will be reviewed by the planning board with public hearing process. Um, number two is the planning board cannot deny an application that complies with the zoning because the use of multifamily housing is allowed as of right. Um, the board can apply limited reasonable conditions, which may include modifying lighting, adding fencing, reviewing stormwater design for compliance with applicable standards and adjust parking layout and other structural elements on the site plan. Um, conditions can be used to shape a project, but conditions cannot go so far as to unreasonably interfere with or effectively prohibit the project. Um, all projects will need to comply with building codes, fire codes, health codes, Department of Public Works regulations, state and local wetlands and other environmental regulations. And given the limited nature of site plan review for a by right use, the applicant, the applicant cannot be required to fund major off-site public infrastructure improvements as a condition of approval beyond the requirements of code and non-zoning regulations that we noted above. And the, and the town is also under no obligation to make investments in public infrastructure to make an individual project viable. Um, so the next, the next slide is about additional site plan review standards. Um, to assure that buildings are designed with regard to their relationship to open spaces, existing buildings and other community assets in the area. Uh, to address all collection and storage areas for residential refuges. To assure provision of adequate water, sewer and utility service to serve the project. To address pedestrian and vehicular movement with, within and outside the project site, including application of reasonable mitigation measures to address traffic attributable to the project. And to include construction management standards consistent with those of the town's general bylaws. So those are things that the base compliance plan will include as additional site plan review. Um, housing affordability, what do we have for that? This only requires that twelve point five percent of all new units and buildings with six or more units are set aside as deed restricted affordable housing for those making up to eighty percent of the area median income. This is consistent with Needham's existing zoning. RKG's economic feasibility analysis supports this recommendation in compliance with state guidelines under the MBTI Communities Act. Keeping that affordability of twelve point five once Needham continue to stay above the state's requirement of ten percent affordability townwide. I want to show you some because, um, units per acre is not necessarily easy to tell a, a, a height of building. So we're going to show you here existing neighborhood multifamily housing so that you can understand in general the different, um, types of housing that we have and what that units per acre are. So, um. Apartment ten, Great Plain Avenue is seventeen units per acre, it's a two and a half story building. Nine hundred and ninety-eight, Denham Avenue is a three story, the three and a half story at eight units per acre. Four oh one to four oh five Hundred West Street is twenty-seven units per acre and that's about two and a half stories. Um, the Highlands is fourteen units per acre, Denmark Lane is twelve and Twenty-Five High Street is ten. The next slide shows, uh, Stephen Palmer, which is eighteen units per acre. Three-story building, Denham Avenue, which is a first round building, it's forty-three units per acre. Uh, S Street currently three stories is thirty-six units per acre. Rosemary Ridge, eighteen units per acre, Charles River Landing, forty-four. Um, and that's four stories and Rosemary Lake, three stories at twenty-nine. So none of the, um, zoning that we're showing is really, really exceeding any of the things that we already have in town in that density. Um, examples of multifamily housing can include townhomes, it could include three to four-story multifamily buildings, denser single-family homes, live-work townhomes, three-stories multifamily, um, buildings as well. And, and, um, in general, we'd like to go through each of the areas to show how high, um, how many stories will be in each area. So we'll start with Chestnut Street Business. On the bottom, that's the Hardy-Graham, it's three stories. Chestnut Street Business, where, um, Roach Brothers is. And, uh, Chestnut Street Business on the other side with, um, the VFW is, is also three stories. As we go up Chestnut Street, the next one has, um. Let me make sure we're on the same. The Chestnut Street Business, um, on both sides would be three stories. Um, and then the Chestnut Street Business up closer to the hospital, also three stories. The next slide shows, um, industrial apartment A one behind Chestnut Street Business will also be three stories. You continue up and you get closer to the center of town, there's an industrial, you see the industrial apartment A one. Um, up a little further, Chestnut Street Business is three stories. And then we move on to the area that has, um. Show them. Business District and Apartment A one, which are also three stories. The next one is. That includes Avery Square, so it's industrial Hillside, it's the apartment A one for Rosemary Lake and the Avery Square Business. Um, so the apartment A one and industrial Hillside would both be three stories. And as, and as you reach Avery Square, that's three by right. Avery Square Business and four by special permit. Um, up a little further, um, where the senior center is, Hillside Avenue Business would be three stories. Industrial Crescent is three stories and Apartment A one is three stories. And finally, as we move up, um, sorry, as we, the last one is Apartment A one, that's the Charles Court, that's also three stories. So just to show you the height in all of these different areas for the base plan. And with that, I think that's the conclusion of the presentation. Um, so what I'd like to do is open up for, uh, comment. And I just want to read, as we open up to public comment, um, I would like to remind that in these of our boundaries for public hearings to ensure an accurate public record and to enable a fair platform to hear from our neighbors. I know that we have people who are in person and I assume that we have people, um, right, um, online as well. And so we'll do one and one. Please state your name and address, call it for the record. Please keep your remarks to ten minutes so we can hear from as many people as possible. If you have multiple points to make and need more time, we will genuinely attempt to return to you after others that have not spoken or given a chance to speak. Uh, please address your comments through the chair. Simply saying that you agree with the previous speaker is a great way to have your voice heard while maybe you're able to hear from our other neighbors. Unless a question can be easily answered by a board member, staff and the applicant. We may ask staff to note your question so we can review, consider and subsequently answer it. You can also provide comments in writing by email to planning@needhamma.gov. So, so with that, I'd like to open it up for public comment.
We just.
Do you want people to go over the microphone just because you have to say your name and, and address clearly?
My name is Jack, it wants me, I live on eighty-two Old Farm Road in Needham. I've been at Needham since nineteen fifty-eight. Alright, so my question was the acres, one charted share going from fifty to a hundred. Is that, um, mandatory or how, how did you make that leap to go from fifty to a hundred?
So I think it had to do with the lots and the way that the lots are within a half a mile. And I'll let Lee answer this, but a half a mile of every, uh, train station. So it, it tells you that that's your minimum requirement, but they, it's all based on the, the land that you have and the districts that you have. Is that correct, Lee?
Yes, that's correct. And I, I think, and we had to reach a unit capacity of one thousand seven hundred eighty-four units. And so basically to be able to do that at the density per, per acre, um, type of development that Needham wanted, Needham wanted to see. We actually created a larger acreage mass to accomplish those two goals.
Okay, so the hundred acres would, um, would accommodate the seventeen hundred and eighty-four units?
The hundred acres actually accommodates one thousand eight hundred and seventy units. We had to produce that total of one thousand seven hundred eighty-four. And the zoning filled out under the state's rules creates one thousand eight hundred and seventy, which comes out to eighteen point six units per acre. I mean, it could have been contracted, but then it would have required more dwelling units per acre and greater height. Um, so Needham just took advantage of its existing commercial quarter. Um, where a lot of that housing is currently allowed and we have those dimensional requirements currently.
I'm trying to keep the same character of those areas as they were, so that created less, you know, less density. Keep and, and making it, um, so that every area create about a hundred versus fifty, which was the minimum that you would have. But you could have fifty if you created a lot of densities in areas.
Okay, and just so I understand, because the other thing would be nice is to give handouts because you're throwing a lot of data out there and it goes by fast. But, um, the existing housing that you showed, that, that sort of helps meet the minimum requirement?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and all of this, that, that presentation is online. Um, so you can have access to it at any point, just so that.
It is on, okay, I should have been better prepared.
No, that's okay. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Alex, do you have anything? Okay. Anyone else? Say your name and address.
Sorry. I'm not able to, you can put an extra. Uh, we watched the presentations on the, you can't do the meetings. They're not okay, they're not, what is presented? Um, the, uh, what we're starting to uncover is what the proposal that was going to be sent to this state or whatever. We are running out of the base plan required to be a meeting, whatever requirements. So it's actually that. We're going to find. Fine, drink, smooth it up.
So originally, last year, we sent the base plan and the neighborhood plan that had more housing to the state, for the state to review because we took both of them to town meeting for a town meeting vote. So at that time, they, they agreed that both of them complied. And so, uh, the plan passed at town meeting, um, by a majority, but there was a referendum to take it to the town for a vote. But it passed by about fifty-seven, fifty-eight percent when the town voted. It passed by sixty-five percent?
That's the information I was given by the election.
So there was a majority pass and then it went to a referendum and then it, it passed, um, town, revoked it and go back to town meeting by about fifty-eight percent, by about the same amount. So we came back to the table as to what to take back to town meeting. It was agreed upon to take the base plan and not the other plan back to town meeting. Does that make sense?
Can I try to answer his question?
Sure.
So what we're presenting is exactly. The plan that we presented to the town back in October. It's passed by town. But it was also presented, passed, but was rejected by the referendum. Sense. Now, to compare this base plan that has not changed since October. Tell the requirements of the statute, I think is your question. And so this is on the page that's listed article overview. So. Why not by the statute was that we have a minimum of fifty acres. And the unit capacity, which is based upon town population, is one thousand seven hundred and eighty-four units. Today fifteen loads per acre. The base plan is a minimum. It's one thousand eight hundred and seventy units and it's spread out over a hundred acres. But the reason that we did that for the base plan is because those landing requirements, the statutory requirements, it doesn't take into account what we have physically on it. Just based upon numbers, based upon the size of the. The town. It's total of that town. And that's what the statute requires. In order for us to build a map. With our lots. With our lot sizes and keep it within a half mile of MBTI stations. We can do that and that is close to this one thousand seven hundred and forty-four units. You know, it's like the price is right. It has to be. And we slay up. We're lined up with one thousand eight hundred and seventy units. So we're over it by a lot, it's a hundred units, which is like half a percent. Um, and, and, but that's the way we could fit it into the physical contours of the town and still meet the statutory requirements.
And the physical districts that are already exist. So there was a guideline that this is a minimum, but when you lay it out, it gives a little more.
So now I understand the feeling that the two departments. The board was going to watch more, kind of, so you think whatever.
So everybody.
Yeah, the town, the town, we had a referendum, said we don't got that, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so that is not on the table.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. And what you have, so it sounds like you already submitted to the state, that is the base plan.
Which we had, we submitted to originally, but we resubmitted again because they changed their deadline from December. Which we had submitted to originally, but we resubmitted again because they changed their deadline from December twenty.
It was a state requirement that we get their approval before we actually bring it to town meeting.
Correct.
That's in the stat, well, that's not in the statute, but it's in the guidelines that are going to be.
Section. The state had already approved, and I recognize that the for the base, you see here with the statutory requirement. The municipalities, they require, as a result of a lawsuit between the state regarding just the regulations, they adjusted the state several states, municipalities that were had until a period of time to submit what's called an action plan. An action plan with that, so if it was approved, established the town in compliance, and it's still interim compliance until just the requirement to pass the plan. We've achieved what's called interim compliance, which is a great, very swift. When achieving interim compliance, I anticipate what to say in front of me? What else? Just made as a part of the section, it's not a question, they have several years that we feel so.
Seven hundred and seventy?
Seven hundred and seventy-five.
Seven hundred and seventy-five. So we're really talking about
But the reality about four hundred and eleven could occur in the next ten years, based on calculations and probability. Like, we've had ten years.
By our hands, once we get this passed to town meeting, it's up to hours, okay? So obviously, the headlines that everybody was focusing on was Needham, checks, blah, blah, and he's going to be fine the weather by the state, so it's not.
That's not occurring anymore, because some, right, because everything changed in December with some of the laws that changed. They had to go back and allow compliance until July, for those that weren't out of compliance, as Adam mentioned.
Because of the way the court wound in the Milton case, it gave everybody more time, and the state could not fine us. Okay, that interim compliance that we're talking about, you know, we said we've gotten the interim compliance from the state. We had a date here in February, I don't remember whether it was last week in past or if it's coming up this week, where we had to present that to the state.
The action.
So even though we have July, passed the zoning, we had to we had to submit this plan, what we planned to bring to town meeting, we had to submit that to the state before this date in February. So we complied to that. As I said, see, we didn't follow it, so it wouldn't take long to send us an email that said, looks good to us, and so here we are tonight. Here's the clients, and we're just correct. So legally, the commentary, because I understood from reading the paper that, you know, town meeting there's a large number of town members that stay, last time, is that right? Something like twenty, thirty percent, no?
That's already.
That's not related to this, we don't know, I mean, we're just here to provide the zoning, to comply, and to.
Okay, well, I, I think, my recollection is, so I'm purely going off of my recollection, is that all the town any members who were present at town meeting voted. Would say that, well, with the total vote, including all the town area members, we don't get all the town meeting members at town meeting. Okay, we have two hundred and fifty town any members. We usually get somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and twenty town meeting members showing up at any one session of town meeting. So the town members who were there, I think.
Yes or no?
Is that political commentary? It's not the subject of a law that we're covering. I understand, that's my starting headline again, I was up at the time, and the neighbors were taking so soon around to do the best to show them vote, that's right. Yeah, that's all, that's my entire session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on the line with their hand up? I think anyone else that would like to make a comment. Let me just wait a second, there's someone in the back, and then we'll have you come up, just try to get everyone.
Follow up, simple question.
Sure.
Hi, uh, this is another good idea. Can I play two to one on the street, thirty-two hour restment? I want to understand that something that seems very contradictory. Your presentation in the law, it's not right, it's the presentation, it's out of kilter, I think the regulations are a little out of kilter. Similar to the infrastructure, it's a question that's bothered me for many, this whole discussion. Just pick on sewer, because I think that's the last thing that frustrates me the most, because you got to tear up the street if you're going to do it. Since several developers has no obligation to touch the side, which is also saying the town to do infrastructure. So the motion, you say that the city is is allowed to, I think, the city said that, just to save me, that not have sewer or infrastructure, which I think is a collision, and everywhere developed says the dimensions, so we're getting sewer here, because the sewer might turn big enough, and the developer, so they have to. So are you putting something in there?
I'm going to have Katie talk about it, just in general, Katie has been dealing with all of the infrastructure, but one of the things is that DPW indicated that the town has enough capacity to support the proposed zoning, not requested funding for water and sewer master plans enough in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. But I'll let Katie.
Sure, thanks, good question. And so the zoning is, you know, does the application fit the zoning, and the chair already went through the site plan review. But a building can't get an occupancy permit if it can't show that it has water and sewer and fire suppression and needs electrical codes and all of that to open a building, and so an applicant would never get approval from the planning board and build a building if they know they can't open it because they don't have adequate water or sewer. So the applicant would have to pay to tie into our system. Everywhere that's proposed for rezoning is fully built out for water and sewer, and so a project can tie in, that would be at the developer's expense.
Yes, so this is something that we have I felt like I didn't get an adequate answer from, for that through this process. And that, so there's a capacity for this many apartments, this is how many apartments we have zero for one. Or two, absolutely, they can't get a permit without a time. Same time, the town is under the obligation to provide sewer. So the court just can't structure. This is the collision effect, if you need. It's an assumption, she said, so. So it's all sort of with that. Anything on infrastructure, and so I hear the words that say, well, we can't give you a permit. The upside, get a permit if they fit the site. You're not hearing this call, right, this is more personal, speaking as a member of the sign as the project statute, the trust card. So it's a trial and error. I'm dead, right? I think I recall, it's twenty-two. Seven years, and drafted a statute. So it's developing. Well, somebody has to go for it. So you guys figure it out. I'm sure we, the wise apartment statute, the state law, I'm so proud of you. It's a it as a question, I mean, somebody's got to go back to state representatives, and so fix this all for us, because you're according to our state, you're in a better position. Tell us, and we can't make the right, we have that project, charity motion, pay for the next to the houses, those apartments. Now. See, so the developers have to come in, is I they have to actually get their permits and build thirty years. So some of them, three, four, five years, but I'm not going to say anything to them. So so it's a practical answer, which is that for the develop, it's something that we can develop, okay? So so, so so the apartments, if you can, if too much of that happen. So the thing that I, um, that say two words, and in conclusion, informed mandate. So, and counsel should be willing to state to say, if I exceed a new structure, state you're responsible for this because you made this rule. Statute was passed, and I was reading the statute, those two words came to my mind. I found a mandate, but let's rock that up to the town, tell it to the community, well, yeah, and I agree with you, I think it's an informed mandate, and just, so it definitely is.
I have something to add, but we thought, I think Katie should, when they looked at those plans, they looked at the neighborhood plan with the highest capacity, and they said that the town had enough capacity to support the proposed zoning, is that correct, Katie, for the neighborhood plan?
That's correct, and under Needham's existing zoning in these areas, we're already zoned to be able to allow for over sixteen hundred units in the same area. So the incremental increase is two hundred.
So I, I hear that, I and so they're just sort of judgment. Well, included the notion of I want to say the protective bill. So I'm building that. Sure. In my first statement there's a, there's a big presumption there, that I this occupation. And that is, first of all, it's not well specialized engineering. The surveying of the system. And from I'm looking at asking, it's on the bottom end. So remember, remember that we're talking about town for less than what we already have. To understand that, so if this law ever happened, as there is, I know the, I'm existing, I know the developers could reach a potential, I put sixty million units, that's what can already happen. To, I believe, thirteen million units, we're talking about there are two things that happen, I'm involved in this process, I understand it pretty as like you, so that study all of these processes, building process, through, uh, through some kind of process, a site plan review process. Secondly, we also heard from Katie today, who also said that there's an architect process, they have struck to the satisfaction of the town. It's going to accelerate the system, and they're they have to flow to the system. Uh, in particular, the building actually happens on a site, right? And the, um, on a particular property, when conceptual, so there are other you are obligated to tie into the solar water system. So on site, so to for upper pedestrian vehicular traffic. And if we're satisfied with that, then there's those issues, I shine towards additional issues, or final maintenance department, I'm trying to raise those issues. In the instance, the developer actually so unsatisfied. And it's the issue. So that
We have to comply.
First, the, first, the obligation to town buy. Question, and get that. And stream perhaps involves a lot of certain standards. Fear, well, go, catastrophe, the book, suggesting on time. But achieve. So so, to the intersection street, so, yeah, so to the ground. So that will have a similar this conversation. These regulations are through the regulations, the new permit is off site. It's just not simple, you can't go around to, you can't bless your traffic, but you're screaming, and you're saddles, and drivers, and all of those. And you cannot through these regulations to your permit site. You could. You could. First, you can't, it's just that simple, that's my. So it's, that's just the same way it is, it's. Right? In terms of, this is a concrete, it's a catch twenty two, and. I don't know about catching because the pipes aren't just that big. And that. So the words that. But. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, is there anyone online? No. Yes, here again, yes. Unless there's anyone else, we would like to.
So the one question that whenever this discussion comes up among Needham residents, people always raise. Is what about the Muzzy site? Is that too far away from public transportation?
That is not part of this, that's only by us.
Yes, that's more than a half mile.
Okay, that's what I always.
It's more than a half mile, but we also decided that that was not part of this because we could have had ten percent that wasn't. Um, by, by the. Trace, trace issue, so that's a, that's not part of this at all. Yes. I think we need you to come up and say a name. We can't, people online can't really, really worth.
Can you report it?
We can't. Yeah. So can you give an address, please?
My name is Bob Monahan, one eighty nine, the Horton Street.
Perfect, thank you.
I have a substantive question about the reduction in. Minimum parking spaces per unit from one and a half to one. Could you explain why you think that that is sufficient to meet the needs of a town that already suffers from a gross lack of parking?
I can do that. Can I just say, everybody, Lee and Katie, that answer that one. That's okay.
Sure, there were two, um, recent parking studies that were done, one was done by Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and one was done by a traffic consultant of the town. Um, the traffic consultant for the town looked basically at Needham Center, looked at Chestnut Street Corridor, looked at Avery Square. Um, and looked at what the actual demand was from the, um, um, from the developments that were in, in those areas and actually measured the parking capacity and parking lots. And actually recommended that a standard lower than the one point five that we have in our zoning would be appropriate. Metropolitan Area Planning Commission also went out and counted a couple of apartment developments in Needham. Uh, to, to ascertain actually how many cars were in those parking lots, um, and servicing those units. And they also came up with parking demands that were lower than the one point five that we were requiring. And so it was felt, and I think they also studied it in a more regional basis, so I think it was felt that reducing the standard down from the one point five overall to a one would be appropriate.
Madam Chair. And also. Thank you. So. So the study was obviously done like our town planner was just talking about. Is actually utilized. And additionally to that. The whole concept is to promote what we call transit oriented. So it's to get cars off the road. So if there are fifty units that are going to be developed somewhere, that they will be developed in a preferred location, but we allow transportation. Also is the commercial spine of the town, so that means that if people.
That's a very sad fiction.
It's, it's actually, it's actually not a fiction, it's. It's a choice and it's designed, so. So. It's about twenty. And they're twenty. Spaces. And, and the, the, we might be a certain sample of development. Thirty.
Interrupted for a second, I think that what happened was that that's what they were recommending, right? And you're completely right, but the issue is that we did studies that indicated that all of the housing that we have right now is using less than one point five. So. It, it, basically, um, and we did a study of downtown and it was also, uh, most of our zoning has excessive parking requirements. And we have to give, we basically give variances to every single project. So it sounded like the due diligence that was done by two different organizations led us to lower it to one, one, zero, is that correct, Lee, or?
That's correct.
Okay, I can't, I can't refute the expert then. Um, thank you for.
Do we understand what you're saying?
I think, I think it's preposterous, I think if you're going to offer a two unit, a, a two bedroom unit, you're going to have children in that mix. And mom's going to be running them around the soccer and dad's going to take his car to work. And they're not going to be riding on the MBTA to go to anywhere.
Except for the fact that they can't have two cars there. They're going to, is a battle of marketing, they're going to. If they, if they have two cars.
But, but Adam, one second, this is a minimum, so the one point zero, if a developer wants to put a, a parking garage, they can.
Okay.
So it's, this is just the minimum that they have to do.
So.
We're not developing anything, we're just creating rules for minimums.
So, so this comes back to the same hole that we talked about with our engineer here. Um, in terms of meeting basic needs and presuming that a built, that a contractor is going to. Provide the extra. Amenities that the planning board cannot require him to do. Well, I've gotten sent to a lot of developers and I can tell you that is not the way they want to go.
Let's get back to why the government. Pass this statute. This statute to encourage people to take transportation. Which are Austin or Cambridge. So. The suspension. From the, it's switched to. So. That's a something that added up. The market place is going to decide it. If your vast saying is true. Two cars. Third. It's going to be a market basis for two cars. It's requires. So. I mean, if they take the trial. For cars, it will be fine. So the market place will have to decide that, but I just, I say, you know, personally, I look at that. I, I use support staff, that's all I need. So guys must learn, someone's, they all know what's in the field, that's a drive to. So. Spanish. I suppose Spanish. Other section, and they're not. Of the year insurance, which is going up every year. Second. See. Generation.
So, thank you. I have last question. Um. Is there. Uh, within. This base plan that has now been submitted to the AG's office and accepted. Any, uh, means of giving preference to town employees?
No, we don't have, we cannot have preference for anyone of age or, right, we cannot have any, but we do have incentives for workforce for the, um, we don't have that anymore. That was in the neighborhood plan. In the neighborhood plan, we have preference for workforce as a, um, as an incentive, but we don't have it anymore.
So this doesn't serve our community today. I think that my. Statue, the statue represents that it's only.
But we don't have. Some affordable housing. Words. So. It's good for to live it.
So do you have an estimate as to what a two bedroom unit would cost them on an affordable basis?
So you have that information, Kira? No.
By the time this gets built, you will probably double the numbers. Yes. But, eh, eh, any, any idea what, we, we have existing affordable housing, now what is a two bedroom going for?
Okay, I don't have, uh, those metrics, the market rate for two bedroom can range depending on. The size of the unit and the condition of the unit, if there are amenities, for instance, if it's a new unit like in the Kendrick. Two bedroom unit, I think, uh, can be close to, uh, uh. Three thousand or around three thousand.
Is that market or the?
That's market, I was saying. Uh, affordable. Affordability, it goes, um. Eh, and it's true, I, I just heard someone say it can be more, more expensive than that, that's true, there are.
Oh, I understand what the market rates are.
Right, so I, I don't, I don't have empirical information on the.
Um, so just as an example, um, at the Kendrick for their affordability, it's eighty percent of area median income, a one bedroom is twenty four hundred. And a two bedroom is twenty seven hundred.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Alex, online? No hands, anyone else? One last chance, for anyone? Oh, is there a motion?
I'm looking for a second.
Okay, so a motion from Paul, seconded by Justin, all in favor, say aye. Thank you so much for the comment, um, any final comments from the.
Madam Chair, just out of respect, as for that, who doesn't know, fellow board members know I had a personal issue, that's why I deleted twice, my daughter broker, the store, she's being image, so I had to step out, so I just wanted to let you guys know why I left, so.
Thank you.
I just wanted to get out of respect for board members.
Thank you. Um, any other final comments from anyone on the board or?
Just want to raise the question, do we really want to wait until the next meeting, or do you want to discuss this and make a recommendation now, or about sending it to?
I think we should do that, don't you think?
I think we discussed last week, kind of, well, last. Yeah. At the beginning. Natasha.
Sorry, we, it all depended on any final comments.
Uh, when there's only one change, I would suggest that we do make, um, there's a definition in this current draft, which is from workforce housing. Uh, which is no longer applicable because that is related to the neighborhood plan.
Right.
So if you're going to take action on this, I would recommend that you, um, recommend adoption of Article One with that one changed, that definition being deleted because it's no longer applicable.
I have another change, actually. Let me throw out this refer to organization of the base plan, which was obviously a whole day. I think for simplicity, it's like, I just call it the UTA compliance plan. And so it's saying that, you know, the, the base plan, because if they say the base, it refers, it implies that there's some other framework, which there isn't anymore.
Do you?
My, my own concern is people are used to hear base plan. Sorry, my own concern is that.
Tom.
Listen, just people. I'm doing it right.
Lee and. Lee and Katie.
I think, I think that's just the title for the article, and that's, that language is not used in the zoning itself. I'm sorry. Adam, that language is not used in the zoning, that was just the title that we assigned to the article for the warrant.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it stays always so that people understand it, if it's not, I, I think you make a really good point.
So maybe that, so if it's, if it's a good point, maybe we should change it.
No, no, I think you make a good point to not have it in the article.
Which is, but it, it is a better.
Um. I was just looking at the article. You know, I just put in. The, 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 the base. And, um. No, he's right, it's really on the, in the heading, so I've got no problem just taking that. It's in parentheses, parentheses based compliance plan. I've got no problem just taking out that parenthetical in the two places that it appears, which is that the heading for Article One and the heading for Article Two.
And then in the, and then in the explanatory notes, which is not the dialogue itself, we can strike that reference to.
Yeah. Change. True, I have me with our taking out a definition that has no use in it anyway, is that this article as presented has been blessed by the Commonwealth. Any changes at all? With the possibility that, you know, they'll have to put it back to the Commonwealth to have them to follow that chain, but by taking out. That definition where it sounds to me like moving. Does not provide any harm because it's a definition that's there that's not used.
Okay, that's fine. That's a conservative approach and I'm fine, I'm fine with going down that path.
Any other comments or? Does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we, um, send and transmit this to the, uh, select board.
Um, I, I think what, what you're looking for is a question to what, what, what your recommendation on the article is.
It's a recommendation.
And what, and what you're, what you're recommending you send to the select.
So we, for the, we said we would strike the parenthetical or not, because we have some title.
Yeah.
And we said, so yes, we would recommend that we move forward with, um, recommending this zoning. Submitted. To the base zoning plan from the title. So.
Okay, so the motion was made by Justin, seconded by Paul, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Um, so that's unanimous and. Lee, and what, what else do you need from us?
That's fine, I think I have, what, what, what I need, you voted for both articles and they'll be submitted in that form for the warrant and I'll record that that's your recommendation.
Yes.
Great, well, thank you, everyone, thank you for coming.
You know, this. Was part of that, was you were understanding what we just voted, that we recommended the town moving, that they pass it, or should we take a separate look for that?
I understood that that's what we were done, I, I, I understood that you would vote it to submit it to the warrant in this form.
Correct. But just.
Then why don't you just, why don't you just take a second vote, just to be clear, okay?
Right, so I. This, this term warrant, so.
Okay, so Paul made the motion, already seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So again, unanimous.
Yeah.
So. The next item is a report from the planning director and board members, I know we wanted to talk about, you know, about significant amount of meetings coming up.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about two things, I just wanted to update you that I am, am working with the town engineer and town council and I have time, we've connected with the state, the CR, to do a, during a review of our draft zoning for the floodplain. And so I anticipate having the draft, um, articles in front of you at the next meeting, which will be referred to the select board at that time, and there'll be two articles. One, this is basically changing the regulatory framework, and the other is updating the zoning map to reflect the new FEMA lines. Um, so that's on the agenda for the meeting on the twenty fifth. And I just also want, we, we've added a number of extra meetings, like certainly this meeting tonight, we have a meeting scheduled for February twenty fifth, then again on March eighteenth. Then a special meeting on the zoning for the floodplain on the twenty seventh, and a meeting on April first. But we also have on the calendar, a meeting on March the fourth, and I don't feel that we really need it, so I was going to suggest that we, um, not meet, not anything. I think unless anyone is dying to meet. Marty, if you have agenda items.
No, because we have four meet, you know, we have double the meetings that we normally have, that I would recommend that we don't have much for, is that okay with the group?
That's fine with me, at least.
Okay, do we need to vote that, we don't need to?
No, I just wanted to, no, she, she, that was her.
Okay. Thank you, any other reports?
Uh, just one, we, we, we're, we're. This is looking at the. After that. Soon on to the. We're going to be doing, let's call it house tours at the. Sample houses in the wall in front of the watch, and give our, it's like give our perceptions based on a few criteria of what we're seeing and what we believe. Is we may, we have to, we have to start somewhere, so that's where we started. So that's what's, that's what's happening right now before next week.
Excellent, when's your next meeting?
Uh, the March, November.
Friday, Thursday. Oh, the day before the meeting we canceled, okay. Great. Thank you, any, anything else, I hope we don't have any correspondence, and I think those are all the agenda items.
That's it.
Okay, so the next meeting is February twenty fifth?
That's correct.
Okay, so thank you, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
But, Justin, the party seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.